Thank you guys so much for being here this evening. The City of Alamo Board of Commissioners Special Meeting for the month of November, Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five at six P. M. at the Alamo City Hall, four-twenty North Tower Road, Alamo, Texas, seven-eight-five-one-six. We will now call this meeting to order. We'll go to item A, Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Thank you heavenly Father for every person here, God, every family represented, elected official, non-elected official. I thank you for what we're about to celebrate today. I ask you to give us the wisdom, the strength to always do what's right and bring you honor. In your name we pray, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. We'll now go to item C, consideration in action on an ordinance to canvassing the election results of the city, November fourth, twenty twenty-five, general election.
Yes, Mayor. Basically, I'll be reading out the ordinance two-one-three-eleven-twenty-five. After canvassing the returns of said election pursuant to the ordinance of the City of Alamo and pursuant to the applicable provisions of the Texas Election Code, the canvassing board certifies the following are true and correct results to it: That there was cast at said election one thousand nine hundred and eighty-five legal and valid votes. For Commissioner Place One, Oki Salinas, one thousand five hundred and six votes. For Commissioner Place Three, Roel Leon Moreno, Jr., one thousand four hundred and seventeen votes. For Municipal Judge Celia Garcia, one thousand fifty-one votes. And for Diana Martinez, there was eight hundred and sixty-four votes. Said election was duly called, that notice of said election was given in accordance with the law, and that the canvass of the votes cast in said elections and returns thereof were made in accordance with the law. Pursuant to the ordinances of the City of Alamo and applicable provisions of the Texas Elections Code, Commissioner Place One, Oki Salinas, received a majority vote cast to be elected Commissioner Place One of the City of Alamo and shall commence his term of office upon execution of filing of the oath of office for Commissioner Place One of the City of Alamo, Idalou County, Texas. Commissioner Place Three, Roel Leon Moreno, Jr., received a majority votes, a majority of votes cast to be elected Commissioner Place Three of the City of Alamo and shall commence his term of office execution, upon execution and filing of the oath of office for Commissioner Place Three of the City of Alamo. Municipal Judge Celia Garcia received a majority vote of, a majority of votes cast to be elected Municipal Judge of the City of Alamo and shall commence her term of office upon execution and filing of the oath of office for Municipal Judge of the City of Alamo, Idalou County, Texas. So passed and approved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Alamo at a special meeting held in the City of Alamo City Hall on the seventeenth day of November, twenty twenty-five, held in accordance with provisions of Chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code as the ordinance of the canvassing of all votes.
Is there a motion?
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We'll now go to item D, consideration in action to administer the oath of office to the newly elected officials.
Mr. Mayor, we'll start with Commissioner Place One, Commissioner Oki Salinas.
I just wanted to basically congratulate the city, the mayor, the commissioners, the staff, our police chief, our fire chief, because quite honestly, Mayor, the city looks beautiful.
Thank you.
The streets look clean, the parks feel safe, and the city's growing leaps and bounds. So congratulations to each and every one of you and to all the employees. Congratulations. You have a limited budget, a limited staff, and you make it happen. You've got about twenty to thirty thousand people that come into Alamo and live in Alamo on a daily basis, and you're making, you're getting the job done. So congratulations to each and every one of you. So it's my honor to administer this oath of office for the third time to Commissioner Oki Salinas. When he called me and invited me to be here tonight, I didn't hesitate for a second. But after we hung up, I started to think, what am I going to say? Because I've already done this twice before. And the first time I did it, I remember they were saying, "Oki's too young to be a commissioner." But that's exactly why they voted for him, because he brought all these new, young, young ideas and this new energy to the table, and it's been working for him so far. And so that's what people saw in him. The second time around, I know I talked about you being a fireman, all the professional, the professionalism you have, the training that you have. The City of McAllen trusts you with a million-dollar truck. I'm sure we can trust you to make a few decisions around here. And so I started to think, what am I going to say this third time around? And you know what it is, Commissioner? It's your ambition, your ambition to be a better man, your ambition to be a better person, to do better and to be seen better. But it's a very special ambition, because you take that ambition and you apply it to your job here on this table. You want better for the city. You want better for the citizens of the city. You want the city to do better, and you want the city to be seen better. And that's why we love you. That's why we all love you, and that's why we all voted for you, Commissioner. Congratulations.
Okay, you're going to put your right hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible. Let's get you on this side here.
That's what we were dancing about.
You're going to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Oscar Salinas.
I, Oscar Salinas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Commissioner Place One.
Of Commissioner Place One.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state. So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Thank you all again for being here. Like Judge Munoz said, this is the third time, and I still am lost for words of what to say when, when I, when I get sworn in like this. But I just want to thank all of you all for being here. I want to thank my family, my friends, and all our supporters from here for the City of Alamo. We've, we've put a great team together, and this continue, this team continues to work, work every day to do great things for all of you. So again, thank you all again, and God bless.
At this time, I'd like to invite Roel Leon Moreno, Jr. to do Commissioner Place Three, oath of office.
Yes, sir. You're going to place, you're going to place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, please. See if I get the right one here. This one's for you. Well, I'll say a few words. Let me do it. I've, I've had the privilege of knowing Roel since we first ran together, and even before that, we were on the P and Z together. I remember this funny moment that we had at El Dorado. We were trying to decide what to do in the P and Z, because we're both new to it. P and Z stands for planning and zoning. That's where you decide if a residential property goes to commercial property. And so we were Young Guns, and we kind of inherited some of that spirit from Oki. And so that's, that's our nickname is Young Guns. But I'm very proud of this Young Gun, because we've established a lot here in the community, and we've, we've done everything we promised we were. We came out, we supported the, the people of Alamo, and we tried to make the best decision we could. Sometimes we don't always agree, but it, it takes a team of all of us coming together to make these decisions happen for the betterment of the city. But I am very, very proud to stand here before you today and to administer the oath for the first time, for the first time. But if you will, to honor, go ahead and place your left hand on the Bible. Now, repeat after me. I.
Aye.
Roel Moreno, Jr.
Roel Leon Moreno, Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of Commissioner Place Three.
Of Commissioner Place Three.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States and of this state.
And laws of the United States and this state.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all so much for being here. Thank you, Commissioner, actually Judge right now, Garcia. Today I stand here before y'all, honestly, if I, there's one, if I could sum it up with one word, it's gratitude. I'm grateful to God, grateful to my family, to every single one of you all for re-electing me to serve you, to serve our community. It's humbling to be able to be part of something that's bigger than myself, and that something bigger is the City of Alamo. And to serve alongside my colleagues on the board, I def, I told someone a couple, last week, I said, man, every single one of us has our heart in the right place for us, and that's moving it forward. And the reason I decided to put my name again on that ballot is because the job we started is not finished. We're not finished yet with the city. It's been two years that we've worked hard together. I thank staff, because without them, they're literally the hands and feet of the operation. We're policymakers. They make things happen. And I thank you, our citizens, and people that don't even live in the city that come through our city. We want to make the streets better, the water better. We want to be able to bring better things to our city, because it's a quality of life. And two years ago, actually, it was crazy. A memory came up. We got sworn in November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. As some of y'all may know, I was actually very sick. Two days prior, I woke up deaf out of nowhere. I got hit with a form of meningitis. I thank God I'm here. I couldn't barely walk. My wife was holding me up. And just to, to see how far my health has come and how far the cities come together, it's humbling. I thank every single one of you for being here, because every single one of you all has a voice, and that voice is your vote. And you elected us, and we're here to serve you guys at every capacity. So thank you so much. God bless you all, and God bless the City of Alamo, Texas.
And now for Alamo Municipal Judge. Invite Celia Garcia.
First of all, I want to give thanks to God for giving us the privilege of being here. But I also want to thank the citizens of Alamo for blessing us with the opportunity and entrusting us with the opportunity of being here, serving for the past decades. She will be starting her fifth term. So when she finishes this fifth term, it's in twenty years. It's hard to imagine. But nonetheless, she will be the longest-serving judge of the City of Alamo, longer than I did. I was here only for twelve years. So I'm very proud of that. But thank you, citizens of Alamo, for entrusting us, for giving us the privilege of being able to serve you.
Yes, I want to thank you all for being here today and supporting me, to have the faith and the trust in me, because sometimes I, the job is tough, but I got to make tough decisions. I know sometimes people in the community say she's tough. But you know what? At the end of the day, if you go to South Padre Island or Corpus Christi, Houston, there's no politics over there who's going to help you. I just try to make what's, you know, taking care of the community. I just want to continue doing my job as I've done it before. And like he said, this is, I'm the first woman elected here in Alamo. And Albert was here for twelve years, and now I've been here for sixteen years. I just want to continue working. I'm pretty sure the commission, city manager, and everybody knows what I've done for the city, and I do my job. Thank you, everybody, for everything.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I.
Aye.
Celia Garcia. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully.
Will, I will faithfully.
Execute.
Execute.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The office of.
Office of.
Municipal Judge.
Municipal Judge.
Of the City of Alamo.
City of Alamo.
The state of Texas.
State of Texas.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Will preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Very fortunate to have my parents with me today, always there to assist me in everything I do.
Always there to assist me in everything I do.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn this meeting, I'm going to, we're going to allow the commissioners to say a few words. Commissioner Pete?
Congratulations, Commissioner Salinas. It's great that we continue our work here in the City of Alamo. And I value your friendship that you and I have, that we've had the past few years. You know, I didn't know Oki before we got into politics, but you know what? He's a great man. You know, he's a great, he protects lives here and with the fire department there in McAllen, which says a lot, you know what I mean, for him to be able to risk his life out there for people. And Commissioner, thank you so much for being a great friend and a good colleague on this board, and wishing you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
Mayor Protan, Roel Leon Moreno Jr. I've had an opportunity to get the chance to know Roel. Man, a great family man, spiritual man. When I remember we were eating at Eldorado, and a shout out to the owners out there, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Costa. It's the, we actually had dinner, and we were talking, and I was asking him about his family and how he was. And we got an opportunity to get to know Mr. Roel and how that. And I asked him, hey, how would you like to run for city council? And that's one of his passions, I guess he really wanted to do, that he wanted to do. And Commissioner, thank you for being a good friend, a great family man, and also a good colleague on this board with us. So thank you very much. Just Judge Selia, you're number one supporter, one of your number one supporters. I thank you for protecting the integrity of our court. And like you were saying earlier, being a judge, and I know the judges that are here, it's a tough job. You know, it's the, sometimes you're getting woke up in the middle of the night to hear prisoners and go make arrangements. But you know what? I respect every single one of you guys, because, man, to be out there and actually to, to, when you run a court on somebody, man, my gosh, it's like, these are people's lives, right? And I know it's tough, but you know what, Judge? Thank you for being a judge here in the City of Alamo, and I wish nothing but the best here in Alamo. Thank you, Judge.
Well, I'll just, I'll say a few things about Mr. Salinas here, Oscar Oki. You know, when you decide to run for a commission, it doesn't really have a manual. And if you get elected and you win, right? No one's really there to teach you what commissioner is 101. Roel and I were very fortunate enough that we had Oki Salinas here. And I remember those times where I would look at him and I'd ask him, what are they talking about? He's like, look, this is how you're going to do things. This is how it's going to be done. This is how Alamo operates, and this is what you need to know. And, you know, he'd kind of give me these little side notes on the side and just say like, hey, you don't, that's not the proper way to say it. You make a motion, if it dies, it dies, you know, you could bring it up later, you could table it. But there isn't really a course that I ever took that would teach you that. And so I'm just very grateful to have you by my side. So thank you very much, Commissioner Salinas. Very, very proud to stand and to sit next to you. I've learned a lot, and four more years, so we'll see. And then for Roel, well, you know, what can I say? There's so much. I'll just keep it simple. I really do respect you, and I'm very proud of you. And I'm just, I'm very happy that you sit on this board for another four years. I'm sure we're going to have a bunch of great adventures, a lot of great city meetings, a lot of great conferences. But here's to another four years, Roel. And last but not least, of course, Mom. I don't know where to start. All I can say is that she is the hardest-working person in this entire city hall. I can tell you that right now. Day in, day out, doesn't matter, she's on call 24/7, 365 days, it doesn't matter. Holidays don't exist, vacations don't exist. She's a workaholic. She's always been that way. That's where I get my work ethic from, and I can just tell you that Alamo's in great hands with somebody with her experience and her wisdom, and especially having my dad around. So that's a huge blessing for all of us. And I'm just, I'm very, very proud of you, Mom. I'm glad that you're here tonight. And I feel that Alamo is united, and we're ready to go on to 2026. So thank you, Mom.
Well, for me, I'll start off with Commissioner Oki Salinas. Oki is my compadre. We grew up together. He and I are the same age. I think I'm maybe like a week older or a couple of days.
Two weeks older.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
So, you know, Oki's a great friend of mine. He's an awesome commissioner, public servant, aside from being an amazing firefighter. And I can tell you that Oki shows up every single day, ready to work here for our community, for the City of Alamo, for the citizens here. And like I tell everyone all the time, in order for us to get something done here at the City of Alamo, there's no I in team. And so here, it's a total team approach. And we've been extremely successful in these last two years, but because we're working as a team, and Oki's been a huge part of that team. So thank you, Commissioner, and I look forward to serving with you the next four years. Thank you so much. You know, I met Roel years ago. I first met him, and I got to know Roel. One thing about Roel is that what struck me right away was that he used to be a professional boxer. So I said, oh, this guy's a fighter, right? This guy's a fighter. I'm going to try him out. So we all got together, and we put him on the planning and zoning. And he started off on the planning and zoning, and we're watching him, and we're watching him, and we're watching him. And we saw him grow and grow and grow. But one thing I did know is that, well, if he's a fighter, he doesn't give up. If he's a fighter, he knows how to work. He knows what it takes, right? To get up every day and to show up and to make it happen. And so when the time came, Roel's opportunity came, and he jumped right in. And he got it, and we won, and he's been here, part of this team, you know? This team together, we just celebrated our state of the city a couple of days ago. And we have been able to spearhead $70 million in projects in two years. And a big part of that is the team, right? So without this team, none of that is possible. And just like Oki, Roel is a big part of that team. And everything we do here, we do it together, and we do it as a team. And all the greatness that we've, you know, that we've been able to accomplish here in the last two years is because of that team. So I'm extremely proud to be part of the team and also to serve next to you for the next couple of years, four years, Roel. So thank you for all you do. God bless you. Judge Selia Garcia, I mean, what can I say? Judge Albert, Judge Selia, always, always helping our community. Some of the most humble public servants I've ever met in my life. She runs that court with integrity, with purpose. You know, the court system has a lot to do with the City of Alamo in the sense that we work off fines and fees, we work off all different kinds of entities that help the city grow. And Judge Garcia does a tremendous job. She understands the system. She knows what it's about. It's just not about arraigning people and, you know, doing that kind of thing. But there's also a business side to it. And she does a tremendous job overall. And she's just a tremendous public servant. And thank you, Judge, and I look forward to serving next to you for the next four years. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to add anything? Commissioners?
Oh, one last thing. So after this is all done, we're all going to be at the landmark. Big celebration, food, drinks, and hopefully the Cowboys win tonight. Can't wait to see you all there.
I just also want to congratulate Judge Garcia for, on your victory and getting re-elected. The public, the City of Alamo spoke and brought you back with what we need. And we're very happy for everything that you do, not just for the city, but for the community. We can't thank you enough for everything you do. So again, congratulations, Judge.
Congratulations to Roel Moreno.
You know, I thank people. It's very hard to continue to thank people. But I think, we don't have the exact number, but I think it's been over 30 years since the city has had an unopposed commissioner's race. And the City of Alamo gave Roel and I the opportunity this time. So thank you all again.
Thank you.
I want to say, congratulations, Judge. You know, you're so awesome. You're so unique. If I could define Judge Selia with one word, it'd be a servant. She has a servant's heart. She definitely always puts people before herself, always puts the community before herself. Every Christmas for about 20 years, right, if I'm not mistaken? You've been given, more than 20 years. Since 1995. I was born 1994. That's 30 years ago. 30 years she's been giving toys to the community. Backpacks, pencils, paper. She's equipped and helped comfort so many children for literally decades here in our community. So thank you so much for that. And thank you, Judge Albert. Y'all are so amazing. I'll never forget, man, the first time I needed help with my financial report, Judge Albert came to my house. I was like, who will buy it for this man to come? You know, the Garcia family's been so amazing. And Commissioner Salinas, it's an honor to serve with you. I know we all laugh a lot. It's because we have such a good commodity. We're really a family, you know? We're all a family up here, the five of us. And I think it benefits the community so much, how we're all so uniform. And Commissioner Salinas, you're an amazing man. You have so much integrity. I want to thank you for your leadership, for always, always not being afraid to speak what you feels best. You know, you're very vocal, and I think that's an amazing strength. So thank you so much, and we got to give you more wisdom and strength to continue to do what's right.
Okay, is everyone good? At this time, we'll move to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a first and a second. Meeting now adjourned. Thank you guys so much.